Next up is ordinance number 2020-09-049. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, Addition of Section 2-5, Electronic Virtual Public Meetings. And this is brought forward from Committee of the Whole from the 21st and the October 1st meeting. There's a memo in your packet along with the draft ordinance. And I just wanted to summarize the changes that were made in the ordinance based on your comments from last week. So if you've got the ordinance in front of you, you can file, follow along. The first changes or amendments that were made was Section 2-5b1c. The language has been changed to quote, "Public comment shall be limited to no more than three minutes per person." Period. Then a new sentence. "The public input portion of the meeting shall total no more than one hour unless otherwise shortened or extended by majority vote of the public body members present." So that was, the one sentence was split into two to clarify the time allowed per person plus the total amount of time allowed for public input. And then the amendment was to, instead of a two-thirds vote of the public body, a majority vote of the public body could extend the total amount of time allotted. And then on that same page, which is Page 3 of the ordinance, under invited presentations, the language was clarified to state that members of the public who are invited by the presiding officer. So the presiding officer is either the mayor chairing the city council meeting or a council member chairing the committee of the whole meeting. The, when the members of the public are invited by the presiding officer to present on a specific topic, they'll be limited to speaking for no more than 10 minutes unless that time is shortened or extended by a vote of the public body. And this distinguishes between members of the public being invited to give a presentation versus other people invited by staff to give a presentation related to a specific agenda item. So last week, you know, we had a presentation by the RPC on the Kickapoo rail trail. Other times we'll bring in, if there's a development agreement before us, we will have developers come in and talk, or there may be other experts on certain topics. But this language refers to members of the public who are occasionally invited to present to city council. And we also clarified the language to make sure that when public body members, that would be council members or board or commission members who want to schedule such a presentation by a member of the public, you make, you have to coordinate that with the presiding officer. And then the presiding officer will schedule that with either the city administrator, if we're talking about a council or committee meeting, or the staff liaison for the boards and commissions. And that's just to make sure that we have time on the agenda and we know that we need to fit that in. And then the third, third item on this memo refers to Section 2, Section 2, Section, whoops, sorry. Section 4, and it's Section 2-27, Rules for Deliberation. And that was related to the motion to defer. And I originally included this as part of this ordinance because I wanted to try to translate what's a very complicated paragraph into plainer English that was easier to understand. But in the attempt to repair this, we actually inadvertently altered it in meeting, in meaning. And then Bill Brown tried to fix that last week by eliminating one of the paragraph, one of the sentences. And just for simplicity sake, I think I, well, and I, I didn't think, I recommend that we revert back to the original language in the code and not attempt to change anything related to that particular language at this point in time. So basically what this deferral rule states is that a city council agenda item that appears on the agenda for the first time can be deferred to the next regular meeting of the city council by a motion and a second with no discussion, no vote. And then as a safety valve, if the council doesn't want to wait until the next city council meeting, they can hold a special city council meeting before the date of the next regular meeting by a three-fourths vote. So we're just going to let that language stand. It will not, nothing in the city code will change. And basically this ordinance will focus, I think, as, as you intended, on rules for public input related to remote meetings. And that's the ordinance you have before you tonight. And I did want to read emails that we received from council members Laut and Hersi. Sharice Hersi said she's good with the public input ordinance. Council member Julie Laut said she wanted to write and quote, "Let you know, I support passage of the proposed ordinance creating rules for public input during remote meetings as amended during Committee of the Whole meeting last week. Thank you for your work on these new rules." And this also came to council with no recommendation. So we would need a meeting and a second to get this on the floor. Not, we need a motion. We have a meeting. We need a motion and a second to get this on the floor.
Well.
Mary Alice?
I'll go ahead and do that since I was committee chair. So ordinance number 2020-09-049, ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, Additions to Sections 2 by 5, Electronic Virtual Public Meetings. I move approval.
And I will second it.
Discussion, Jared.
So I thought, you know, obviously the will is there at the council to pass some of these rules. I'd still like to bring up a couple of things and maybe talk about compromise or somewhere we can meet in the middle since I was on the opposite end. And most of you guys are in support of it as written. But I would still like to propose a couple of things and maybe see if there may be support for, for that. First, first of which would be the two time issues. And the other one's more of a definitions thing because I know that there's not probably going to be a striking of language the way that I would prefer. But anyway, Dennis and I had discussed possibly a compromise between my position being a little bit further and your guys' being a little bit shorter of maybe doing four minutes. And I proposed, proposed to him, one hour and 20 minutes of public input limitation that would give room for 25 people to speak at a given meeting. We don't usually exceed that volume, but I felt like it gave room for a little bit more. Doesn't ask for too much more time, 20 more minutes and one more minute per person to allow folks a little bit more time to get their, get their complete thoughts out because it's not always easy to do in three minutes. So I figured I'd, let's start, let's start with that and I'll ask about the definitions afterwards.
Dennis?
Yes. As, as I was not present last week, I spent a good part of this afternoon listening to the entire city council meeting from last week. And it's big work. But one of the things that I thought would be a compromise would be, I mean, we're always talking about it's going to be five minutes, but we feel it's too long. Three minutes, people think, well, that's nice and brief, but the, the community feels like they can barely get their thoughts in. So, so I proposed four minutes. And I sent this proposal to all of the city council members individually and also the mayor. And I guess I got a pullback. And I found that two other individuals besides myself felt that four minutes could be a consideration. And three, three, three people thought that three minutes was appropriate. So if I join the two people who felt that four minutes was a considerable, a considerate compromise to this, in this discussion, we would have basically, I guess, a tie for, as far as the people who've responded to me. The only person I didn't hear from was Julie Lauts. So Jared suggested that then if I'm going to do four, if I'm going to ask for four minutes, that he'd like to have a longer time. I guess I disagree. I think one hour of public input is plenty. And if we have four-minute public input limits, which it wouldn't have to take four minutes, but if it did take four minutes, that would be the limit. 15 individuals could speak during that time if they took all the time. Well, typically during our city council meetings, after the initial flood of public input, we have had fewer than 15 or fewer people. And tonight we've had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 people speak. That comes within the parameters of a four-minute option. So I support four minutes. I think it gives the people a little more time to express themselves, but it, it also doesn't make the discussion verbose and repetitive. So, so I'm with Jared on four minutes. I'd like to, if we're going to have a discussion about this, I'll propose an amendment that, that we make. We change the time slot to be four minutes per individual at these meetings, but not change the limitation of one hour maximum for a public presentation for the, you know, public access.
I'll support your motion, Dennis.
Is that, you don't need to make a formal motion then?
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we change the language to that section of the ordinance. Section 2-5, in parentheses, B, parentheses, 1C. Public comment shall be limited no more than four minutes per person. That's my recommendation.
So you're, okay. Second for that?
I'd still support it.
That's Jared. So that's an amendment that is amending the original motion made by Mary Alice and Bill Colbrook. Further discussion on this amendment? Bill Colbrook?
Yeah, I just want to kind of disagree with some of the comments. I mean, the three minutes, we've debated this. We've, we've kind of come to, you know, at least consensus besides at least one member of the council that three minutes up to this point has been appropriate time limit. I don't think that, that three minutes has ever been characterized as nice and brief. I think three minutes is appropriate. And what three minutes gets us in an hour is 20 speakers. And we've heard over and over and over again from people in the public input how energized and energetic people in our community are about wanting to address this. So I think it's more important to get 20 people in that hour as opposed to 15. So I would, I would not be in support of changing it to four minutes. And I would be in support of passing it as is, as written.
Any other comment? Mary Alice?
Um, so I kind of agree with Dennis. I think it would be nice to have a compromise here. I, I also feel pretty strongly about the hour. I think the hour is roughly, is just slightly under a third of our meeting. Um, in, in order for us to get business done, I would encourage people to, to only take the amount of time they need to actually give their, their feedback so that, you know, if people only need two minutes and you have, you have some leftover time that you can have more people give input. I did have a question about how this works in with the, and I'm sorry for not bringing those up earlier, how this works out with the emails is the, because we don't talk about the emails that are emailed for public input. We've been reading out the names of people who have sent in public input. Does, and this doesn't cover it. So I, I don't know how the, how the emails factor into this. Diane, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but it does, let me give you the background here. I think an hour of public, of in virtual public input, not including listing off emails that people write and, and tell us. So, but I don't.
Yeah, the, the hour refers to verbal public input. And then emails will be listed by names of the people, but that won't, won't count against the hour. But we will not be reading emails aloud into the record. But the emails sent for public input for the meeting will be incorporated into the meeting record, the minutes. Bill?
Yeah, I support three minutes. I think tonight there were 12 members, 12 people that count, that I counted that spoke. And I don't think over half of them spoke on the agenda item. So I think if we did have an agenda item that people were interested in speaking on, we'd probably have more than 15 people speaking. And I do think our, our limit is the appropriate time limit for total. For virtual meetings, I think that that's appropriate. And I do think we've compromised and made some improvements over the past few weeks. One was to change the language so that only the presiding officer would make the initial determination about if, like, if it became abusive. One, another one was just to make it, apply to virtual meetings only. So I think it's been a give and take. And I think we've arrived at a good compromise the way it is. I support the way it is.
Any other comments on the motion for four minutes each, one hour total? Okay, so let's, let's vote on that first and then we'll take it from there. Will the clerk please call the roll? And this is voting on the motion to go for four minutes per speaker, one hour maximum public input.
Council member Brown?
No.
Colbrook?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Whoa.
So it's three yeses for four minutes each, one hour, two nos. So the yeses have it. So it now will stand at four minutes each, one hour total. And we go back to the original motion. Any discussion on that? Jared?
So I guess my discussion isn't really based on another amendment. I would probably make one, but I don't think it'll be supported. But I really am concerned about not having clarifying language in the ordinance in relation to, let's see, where is exactly the, Section 2? Section 2-5b1d. "In order to maintain reasonable decorum in the meeting, presiding officer of the meeting shall have the authority to provide a warning, blah, blah, blah. To a speaker who uses abusive, harassing, threatening, or defamatory language or who engages in disorderly conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a meeting." I think that the, that language is still very broad and can be interpreted in a lot of different ways, given the presiding officer. And I think that we need to establish particular rules about what those things mean in order to be clear to the public what the expectations are that the council has deemed are appropriate for giving public comments. Because, you know, there's, it's just, it's not, it's not defined. Those terms are not defined. They can be, they're open to a lot of different kind of interpretation. And I really think that we're putting ourselves in a slippery situation for ourselves or future members of council to abuse the rules that are in there themselves because we don't understand exactly what it is that they mean. And I'm still concerned about the fact that we're leaving that language so open in there like that without defining those things and at least providing examples or something to say, this is what we expect. This is not what we expect. You know, for example, is calling somebody out in particular saying that, hey, you know, Jared Miller said this last week and I really don't think that he should have said that because of X, Y, and Z. Is that going to be considered abusive? Are we considering that abusive? Or people are just going to find out on the fly as different chairs decide that? I'm still very concerned about, about that language. I don't know what there is to be done about it, but I'd at least like to have a discussion about that.
Dennis?
Okay, so, you know, just as in the presidential debates, we don't like to see bullying. We don't like to see people, you know, in, you know, who are giving, you know, participating in public input here in the city council, bullying other individuals. It's a difference between bullying and calling people liars rather than you saying, I strongly disagree and this is why. You know, and I take, you know, I take umbrage to the fact that you said that. And my point of view is this. So there's ways of, of getting your message across that is civil, still contentious, but civil. So I think that if we have a method in place where we first give a verbal warning to say, and then you can tell the person that please, please refrain from being, using uncivil discourse during the meeting. We understand your feelings, but it's not appropriate. You know, in a city council, you know, we're not, we're not here to have a brawl, a verbal brawl. We're here to express ourselves and understand each other's viewpoints. You know, that's a whole different thing. So there's like a line. And I think just the fact that we did, you know, in one instance, ask a person to please stop now because, you know, you've crossed the line. I've noticed that in the last several weeks, people have been much more respectful in their commentary. So I think that it's an important thing to have limits. I kind of thought it was interesting that, that to Carol Minton earlier, last, last, last week, I, I heard her say that even the school district, the school system expects their students to, you know, to discourse with, among themselves with certain prity. And they have actually like a rule in the school district about speech in class. So we, you know, so it's not unusual to have this. And if, if we were like in a Robert's Rules of Order thing, very, very particularly, you know, there would be, you know, the, the, the leading individual, the chairman of the, the discussion, you know, would have a mallet and might even like bang the mallet and say, okay, that's enough of that. You know, if you want to continue to speak, you know, I'm going to bang the mallet and you're going to be done if you keep this up. So I'm not, I don't have a problem with that, asking for civility. I don't think that we are intending to misuse it, but I, you know, and I don't want to make it so broad that we dampen, you know, truthful commentary. But I certainly don't want to hear people just being called liars without any kind of context or proof, except for an opinion. I mean, or maybe that's free speech. I don't know. But certainly is, is not respectful free speech. There's a lot of other ways to say that you totally disagree with what I've just heard. That's my point of view.
Any other comments? Mary Alice?
Um, so Jared, I think traditionally what happens in ordinances is there's a difference between council rules and ordinances. So I think that if we had some definitions, some examples, as you're talking about, I think the appropriate place to put those would be in council roles.
There, yeah, I, there will be, once this passes, we'll, we will rewrite the instructions that appear on every single agenda role, you know, for public input. And we can be very clear about, you know, and we can even provide examples. But one of the things we can be clear about is, you know, please address your comments to the council as a whole and in general, and, and that sort of thing. So there will be some very specific rule, or rules written for the agenda that will appear on every agenda that the public will have. Jim, you got a comment?
Let me expand the answers that have been given on Jared's question. Abusive. You can find the word in obviously the dictionary. And it means intended to demean, humiliate, mock, insult, or belittle. I think we heard a fair amount of that tonight. Here's harassing. In addition to prejudicial, it is hostile and intimidating language to try to force somebody to back down or change something. Defamation does have a legal definition. It's an untrue statement that is knowingly made and published to a third person where that third person relies on it. That's, those are the elements of defamation. I've handled a number of defamation cases and I've heard it at almost every single meeting. Free speech. I believe council member Miller mentioned free speech. Public, courts have held that public input, and the PAC has also held, that public input is a limited public forum. It's not the courthouse steps or the steps of the city building where protesters are allowed to gather. It's a controlled environment. Limited public forums can be controlled, free speech in time, place, and manner. You just amended an ordinance that deals with time. The place obviously is the city council meeting. Lack of decorum and incivility is considered manner. And manner can be regulated. Courts have clearly held that. And one way that manner can be regulated is, a public body has the legal right to regulate abusive speech, harassing speech, and defamatory speech. And in fact, that kind of conduct is technically not speech in terms of free speech. It's manner that is controlled. And so courts, including courts, federal courts in Illinois, excuse me, Illinois, have held that reasonable manner regulations are permitted. To give examples, treatises have been written on what examples are. And they are dealt with on a case-by-case basis. So that's, that's why those particular words were specifically chosen for this particular section because they've been recognized by the courts.
And we can include those definitions in the written instructions that are listed on the agenda. And it's also important to note that public comment can also be made via email. And that in, in the rare occasion that someone is asked to, to stop and they don't, they will have the opportunity to finish their comments via email and that will be included in the meeting record as well. Any other comments? Mary Alice? Unmute, please.
Sorry. I had a question following up on accommodations. So I, I did look at today's instructions for public input and I didn't see anything in there. Maybe I missed it on how people who have disability that would, they would need an accommodation for, weren't on, it was not included on there. So I just wanted to follow up on that.
It was included on, under the section on public input at very bottom of the page.
Okay.
Page two of the agenda. So it's still there.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure. It's not on the actual public input directions? Am I missing it?
Yeah, on the back page of the agenda, public inputs, after email input, it's at the very bottom of the page. And that's usually where it is.
Oh, so there's actually a PDF up on the agenda, on the meeting minutes that has specifically public input? There's an actual document up there on the website and it's not included on that? It's not included on that?
Okay.
At least what's currently up on the web. I'm just telling you. We just need to make sure that we consistently put where.
Good point. Okay. I just see it on mine. So I will make sure, we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Sorry about. Bill?
Um, yeah, I think I support this as it is. The, I think the two, there's, there's going to be some differences, I think, between the way presiding officers enforce this, just like there are in everything. Even when we were meeting in person and people went over the time limit now and then, some people would cut them off right away, some people wouldn't. So there's just going to be some differences. I didn't hear anything tonight that I thought I would have given a warning on. Maybe somebody would have gotten a warning from somebody else. But if, I, I think there's two checks. There's a warning that people can get if they're going, stepping over the line. And then the other check is whether And then the other check is whether the presiding officer decides to cut someone off or not. The council members can, if they decide to cut someone off, a council member can appeal the decision of the chair using Robert's Rules, and then we vote on it. If the presiding officer isn't doing anything, then you can call point of order and ask for the rules to be enforced. And if the presiding officer doesn't do anything, you can vote on it. So there's, and you know, Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think those are the main checks on this. So it's not completely up to the presiding officer, but I think that there are enough checks. And it'll be a little bit of a learning process, but I think it's already improved quite a bit.
Carol, did you want to speak? And then Jim?
Yeah, just along the lines of what Bill Brown was just describing, there's actually a section in Robert's Rules about when the members themselves get, become out of order. And, and the Robert's Rules doesn't speak directly to bodies that receive public testimony or public input. But I think it would be very easy to adapt what Bill was describing and make a clean process, which is that either the chair or the, or another member of the body says, I find the, again, it was, it was targeted around members. I find member Smith out of order. And so the chair can say that, or a member of the body could say, I find them out of order. And then the chair says, shall I allow member Smith to continue? So you enlist the support of the body in, you know, either admonishing the person and cutting them off, or allowing them to continue. And you can still, you know, say, or whoever makes the call could say what they're finding offensive and ask them to, you know, confine their comments to something, or to stop making a reference to a particular individual, or stop making accusatory remarks or something like that. I think there's kind of a clean way to do it. We just need to give people tools. And the mayor and I were talking earlier about how we might go about training the members of the boards and commissions to become comfortable with enforcing these rules or putting them into practice.
Jared?
So that, you know, brings up a question I brought up in many emails prior to this, on this issue in the Jack Waller recommendation from 2005, and how he had described how we deal with the general public input versus specific public input on items, and how he had said that he would prefer that the city not ever put itself in a position of having to defend exactly what it is that we're proposing making rules of doing now. And that, you know, you basically just ignore the person who you don't like hearing their comments of. The chair can walk out of the room, give the chair to the other presiding officer, and then come back when they're done and move on so that it can't be, there's no possibility of it being construed that someone is using the power of the chair to quiet someone because they don't like what they're, what they have to say, which is a content-based restriction, which are not allowed. And that's what all of this stems from. And I never got a response as to why we're moving away from a method that has been in place since then. And I don't know, maybe rulings have come out that have changed how the courts are seeing that, but I'm not aware of any, and I couldn't find any PAC rulings that made it seem like that, that was, that was a factor. So, you know, and again, you know, this is, this was the thing I brought up before, and I'd bring it up again, not even just for lack of having uniform enforcement and opening ourselves up to lawsuits, because we're, you know, we really only get one kind of comments in this kind of meeting, and those are ones that are critical of us most of the time. And the only reason that this has even been brought up seems to be because people don't like the way that people are saying those things about it. And we're trying to come up with some creative language that allows us to say that, oh, well, these are manner-based restrictions and not content-based restrictions. But I have a feeling the way that this is going to end up getting applied, if people don't like what they're hearing, it's going to be because they don't like what they're hearing and not how they're hearing it. So that's why I'm asking for these things. And Jim, I never heard anything from you on, on that '05 opinion from Jack as far as how you saw that and how it applies to what we're trying to do right now.
Jim?
I'd be happy to address that, because I've years ago discussed it with Jack. First of all, it applied, the way it's written, it applies to in-person meetings. And actually, it allows any council member to walk out of the room if they don't like what they hear. Two, the kinds of comments that I've been hearing for months are vastly different than the kind of comments that had been posited in public comment. In early November, I will have been here eight years, and I have never heard the vituperative type comments at a public input that I've heard the last few months. Now, you are, as council members, you are put between a rock and a hard place by quote, walking out. How do people walk out in a remote meeting? They turn off their audio if they want, and they turn off their video if they want. And we heard concerns expressed by a number of people, or at least one or two people in the public, that they feel that that is discourteous. It's like turning your back on them. So how do you do it in a remote meeting? In fact, that same comment could apply to Jack's recommendations on how to handle abusive public comment. Walking out, I think there'll be members of the public who say, you know, how dare you ignore me by walking out of a meeting? So obviously, there's a call there. I can assure you, at least the cases that I've read and the PAC opinions, the two PAC opinions I've read that cite to a couple of key cases have indicated that issues of decorum, not what was said, not the, not the underlying substance of the message was said, but the manner is a manner, not a content issue. I agree with you, Jared, that it, there is a slippery slope in when manner slides into comment. To say that Jared Miller is corrupt or deceptive, or engages in a conspiracy to deceive, or has fostered the theft of thousands of dollars from the public in, I don't know, rental registration fees. I'm making up a hypothetical. That's, that's not only manner, but that is clearly defamation, because it imputes a crime on somebody. And when you impute a crime with the, with the tone and the rest of the comment, that suggests, you got to prove it in court, but suggests malice. That means a plaintiff, if they were to file an action, would not even have to prove actual damages, loss of money. They could get theoretically punitive damages or whatever, whatever the court awards or jury awards. Defamation's not protected, any more than pornography is protected. I defy anyone to define pornography, and you'll get 1,000 different definitions. And in fact, a famous line from a Supreme Court justice on pornography was, I can't defy it, but define it, but I know it when I see it. You're familiar with that one. And that's the same with the abuse, harassment, and defamation. But defamation does have a legal definition. So I'm not sure how to handle it any different than Jack without drawing criticism from the public about metaphorically turning your back, walking out, or going dark in a Zoom meeting.
This language, I also would point out, is very similar to what you see in many different municipalities around the state. So they have figured out how to do it, and we'll be working our way through it.
And that, that's why, that's why they've chosen the language, because the courts have vetted it.
Yes. Any other additional comments? Mary Alice?
I just like to echo a little bit about what Bill Brown had said. This, there was an original proposal from Diane on public comment. There was several things that have been altered. One of them was, we did change the number of things that we said the manner related to. Personal insults, I think, is one thing that was, was pulled out because it's content. We have Zoom meeting rules now because we live in a different world right now in terms of how to handle these things. There were questions tonight about why we're going through with this. Why are we doing it now when there were differences in terms of how public input was handled throughout this time of COVID? And my response to that is, is that we really need to give as clear, as clear rules to the public that they know what to expect. And to that, Jared, I agree. We need to have more information in terms of how we define some of these words. But we before had changes in the amount of time that we were giving to public input, some changes in the, it was very difficult to figure out if there was 20 people who are going to be speaking. How do you count the emails, et cetera? So, so my thought with this proposal is that, is it perfect? No. Are there going to be hiccups? Yes. But it gives a clearer definition to the public in terms of how public input will be taken during Zoom or other forms of electronic meetings. I fully expect that if there is something that the ACLU says this is a violation of freedom of speech, and you need to change your code. I fully expect that we will see an amendment or a change to the city code based on some of that feedback. So at this time, I mean, based on the number of conversations that I've had with people, both, both people who live in my ward, and certainly with, with the city council members, at this time, I'm willing to support those.
Jared?
Well, I guess then I would just ask for, if we're going to put those rules forward in the council rules or public rules, or wherever we post them for people to reference to them, that we make reference to whatever supporting legal rulings and things that Jim normally sends when he sends stuff to us along with those, so that people can understand that we're not just saying that this is a thing that we're doing, that there are, here are our legal reasons why we think that this is a thing we're able to do. And specifically because it's come up numerous times, I, I want to see what the arguments are for not being able to address council members or staff members individually. If it's done so in a manner in which the language is not abusive or any of those things, but they want to specifically address something that somebody said, or something that somebody did. I don't see how that can be construed as a, as not being content-based. That sounds like what up? We're talking about someone specifically or addressing someone specifically. That is content. As long as you're not doing it in a way that's rude and terrible, then you should be able to address what folks have said. I mean, how else are we going to know what people are reacting to us? So if that's going to be included in the rules, I would really like to see that. But it should be for all of these things, for the abusive, whatever it is. We need to cite those things for the, for the public so that they know where our standing is.
And include the citations and definitions. Absolutely. Are we ready to vote? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Holbrook?
Yes.
Miller?
Nope.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. And we'll have council rules pertaining to these new public input protocols with the agenda next week.